Our human resource department will be assisting the board and the LAC staff in the recruitment. And the city will play a supporting role to LAC in this process and they'll take the lead. One of the other things that we've been working on in this interim period is really how we handle prospects as we continue to move forward. The city manager's office is working with LAC staff and the board to put some communication processes in place to improve communications between LAC and the city early on in the process, working with prospects and as we're moving through the recruitment process. We think that improving the connection and information flow will help Longmont beef up its competitiveness with other communities. The other thing that we're starting discussions on and we've been in the last couple of weeks, I've been having conversations with the board members and some staff is really looking at a targeted industry analysis. We're looking to develop the scope of services for a third party to potentially come in and perform this. We want to help figure out a way that we can channel our marketing dollars to industries that fit our unique demographics in Longmont, the location, infrastructure and the existing industry clusters that we have. In addition, we also think this kind of analysis will provide some recommendations that can help us strengthen our partnership with LAC and the chamber and the other economic development partners within the community. In general, there's a lot of enthusiasm as we continue to move through this interim process between LAC and the city staff about this opportunity and how we can step back during the transition and see how we can partner more effectively with each other. So I just wanted to give council a quick update in terms of what we've been doing as staff and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those or if the LAC representatives can answer any questions, we'll be happy to do that.
Any questions for council?
Thank you Mayor Coombs. One of the things I would like to see us do when we're looking at industry clusters is to look at the industries we have now and look at the vendors that service those industries and see if we can get those industries to come here.
That's actually part of the target industry analysis that you go through is you identify those value-added industries and that's a focus that we want to bring to our discussions to the process.
Okay, I would like to be heard. The first person on the list is Charles and I really, it looks like an R-L, is there a Charles?
Okay, I can't read the writing.
1760 Sunlight is here to speak on 4B. Okay, well, come on, come forward. Come down and state your name and address for the record when you get to the mic.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, most of you don't know me, but I spent 20 years in this building and build it during my administration.
Could you say your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Charles Clary, 1760 Sunlight Drive, Longmont 80504. Now, what I'm here this evening about, I have been out of the city government for 30 years in Longmont and I've had no complaints, lived here peacefully and everything's been fine. But in the last three years, the Rough and Ready Ditch runs behind our subdivision. I moved there in 1996 and was one of the first houses in the subdivision, went through all the planning process for that subdivision with the trail, etc. behind it. The capital investments were made, put sprinkler system in and manicured the trail to be one of the finest pieces of trail in the city of Longmont at that time. It has the old cottonwood trees planted by the pioneers, I forget their name, they owned the farm there in the Rough and Ready Ditch water. But I'm only going to bring up a couple of things because I've been through this with Charles Camanides and in the last three years, we go through meetings with people and then they move the boundaries of what they're going to grow weeds and what they're going to mow every week. Now, this is the only problem we really have with it, this year has become a real issue. They don't know where the boundary is. They've got three of them set up right now and some of our neighbors here have pictures of how this thing is growing out of bound or just completely gone, weeds are waist-high in some areas. Now, the concerns that I'm having mainly, and I spoke to the fire department, as you know, Colorado Springs, every town's had a major disaster with fires. What's happening right now with this not mowing these weeds, they're waist-high and it could be a major catastrophe for the city of Longmont all through that whole stretch. Secondly, what's happening as far as people buying in this area, we've had a decline in our assessed valuations by county assessors. Now, I haven't gone into a lot of study on why he did that. Most people say, "Man, that's really good," but when you look at what's happening and you look at the backyards of these houses with all these weeds growing, noxious weeds, we've got every kind in there, it just isn't right. And what my request and a lot of the neighbors that are here tonight is just, let's get back and if we have to mow it and we don't have a homeowner association, we're willing to provide a district if the city will set it up and pay to do that difference.
I have two minutes. Thank you very much and we'll take that under advisement. All right, next up is Bob Wilson.
I'm Bob Wilson, live at 1818 Sunlight Drive, four or five houses north of Charlie and right next to the retention pond. And I must say, the city finally got with it after 12 years and they have made that retention pond look really great this year. All it took was water and they finally put it on there and it looks and perform this. We want to help figure out a way that we can channel our marketing dollars to industries that fit our unique demographics in Longmont, the location, infrastructure, and the existing industry clusters that we have. In addition, we also think this kind of analysis will provide some recommendations that can help us strengthen our partnership with LAC and the chamber and the other economic development partners within the community. In general, there's a lot of enthusiasm as we continue to move, as we move through this interim process between LAC and the city staff about this opportunity and how we can step back during the transition and see how we can partner more effectively with each other. So I just wanted to give council a quick update in terms of what we've been doing as staff, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Or if the LAC representatives can answer any questions, we'll be happy to do that.
Any questions for council?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. One of the things I would like to see us do when we're looking at industry clusters is to look at the industries we have now and look at the vendors that service those industries, and see if we can get those industries to come here.
That's actually part of the target industry analysis that you go through is you identify those value-added industries, and that's a focus that we want to bring in our discussions to the process.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
Okay, Public Invited to Be Heard, the first person on the list is Charles, and I really, it looks like an R-L, is there a Charles?
Okay. I can't read the writing.
Seventeen sixty Sunlight, is here to speak on 4B.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to be here, excuse me, 4B.
Okay, well, come on, come forward. Yep. Come down and state your name and address for the record, and you get to the mic.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, most of you don't know me, but I spent twenty years in this building and built it during my administration.
Could you say your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Charles Clary, seventeen sixty Sunlight Drive, Longmont eight oh five oh four. Now, what I'm here this evening about, I have been out of the city government for thirty years in Longmont, and I've had no complaints, lived here peacefully, and everything's been fine. But in the last three years, the rough-and-ready ditch runs behind our subdivision. I moved there in nineteen ninety-six, and was one of the first houses in the subdivision, went through all the planning process for that subdivision with the trail, et cetera, behind it. The capital investments were made, put sprinkler system in, and manicured the trail to be one of the finest pieces of trail in the city of Longmont at that time. It has the old cottonwood trees planted by the pioneers, I forget their name, they owned the farm there in the rough-and-ready ditch water. But I'm only going to bring up a couple of things, because I've been through this with Charles Camanides, and in the last three years, we go through meetings with people, and then they move the boundaries of what they're going to grow weeds and what they're going to mow every week. Now, this is, the only problem we really have is that this year has become a real They don't know where the boundary is. They've got three of them set up right now, and some of our neighbors here have pictures of how this thing is growing out of bound, or just completely gone. The weeds are waist-high in some areas. Now, the concerns that I'm having mainly, and I've spoke to the fire department, as you know, Colorado Springs, every town's had a major disaster with fires. What's happening right now with this not mowing these weeds, they're waist-high, and it could be a major catastrophe for the city of Longmont all through that whole stretch. Secondly, what's happening as far as people buying in this area, we've had a decline in our assessed valuations by county assessors. Now, I haven't gone into a lot of study on why he did that. Most people say, "Man, that's really good." But when you look at what's happening, and you look at the backyards of these houses with all these weeds growing, noxious weeds, and we've got every kind in there, it just isn't right. And what my request, and a lot of the neighbors that are here tonight, is just, let's get back, and if we have to mow it, and we don't have a homeowner association, but we're willing to provide it a district if the city will set it up and pay to do that difference.
I've got two minutes. Thank you very much, and we'll, okay, take that under advisement. All right, next up is Bob Wilson.
I'm Bob Wilson, live at eighteen eighteen Sunlight Drive, four or five houses north of Charlie, and right next to the retention pond. And I must say, the city finally got with it after twelve years, and they have made that retention pond look really great this year. All it took was water, and they finally put it on there, and it looks really nice. All neighbors, both sides of the street enjoy it. What I'm complaining about is the lack of mowing that they're doing now. Behind my house, I have pictures, but I guess there's no way to show them. The width of the, you can drop them off at the seat there, there's a whole series. The width of the grass between the sidewalk, rough-and-ready ditch, and the path is nine feet. Their mowing's six. It takes a little more than one swath to mow that six feet. They might as well go back to where they were, because that would put them right up to the edge of the ditch. It looks so much better. All the neighbors go by, and they're looking over there, there's a picture of a weed that comes right to here, and there's several weeds just behind my place, there are several weeds behind the retention pond, and all up and down. If I have to take care of my weeds, where's the city? Come on, give us a little help here. And that's my main complaint. Let's go back to the other mowing, it's not going to make that much difference. The guys go back and forth three or four times, blowing the grass, doing all this anyway. I think if they just mowed that up to the ditch, and also Charlie's concerns about when it dries up this fall, it's going to be a fire hazard. Thank you.
Thank you. Vonda Ritter.
My name is Vonda Ritter, and I live at eight oh three Sumner Street. In support of finding better ways to help our city deal with the West Nile virus, other than spraying toxic pesticides, I'd like to offer some creative ways that various communities have helped their citizens protect themselves from the West Nile virus. York County, Virginia officials distribute mosquito-eating fish to residents. Several thousands of the fish have been bred by the county's fishery as part of its mosquito prevention program. Boulder distributed free samples of mosquito dunks, a least-toxic larvicide product for use in stagnant water. Washington DC implemented a tire roundup program for residents to discard old tires, a major breeding site for mosquitoes. Lane County, Oregon, has an easy-to-read public educational flyer that is put in local newspapers and distributed with utility bills early in the season. Westchester County, New York, Department of Health publishes a West Nile virus watch and public notices on their website. Some communities have assisted senior citizens with gutter cleaning, screen repair, draining standing water, and obtaining insect repellent. Others have gone door-to-door to distribute flyers and tell people about the dangers of West Nile virus and what citizens can do to protect themselves. We in Longmont can be active and creative, too, in educating our community members about the West Nile virus and self-protection and prevention measures. How about distributing flyers at grocery stores, the rec center, the YMCA, school and church groups working with children at summer camps, teach about self-protection measures, signs at their pumps at gas stations, TV ads, radio ads, continual front-page announcements in the Times call? There are better and safer ways to protect our city from the West Nile virus.
Thank you. Kay Palmer Martian.
I'm just here for the.
Okay, all right. Ruby Bowman.
My name is Ruby Bowman, fifteen twelve Left Hand Drive, Longmont, and I'm here to offer my comments regarding agenda item, Greenway Mowing Standards. I live in Southmore Park, which is in South Longmont, and the Left Hand Creek Greenway goes through my subdivision. I've noticed on my walks along the greenway between Bowlin and Pike, that the city is not mowing as much of the vegetation on the creek side. Only one mowed strip is done along the sidewalk along this stretch. In past years, park maintenance personnel would mow a larger area. I understand the area around the creek is supposed to be natural and wild, and I support those standards. But mowing only one strip makes our tired, old neighborhood look kind of shabby. Instead of one mowed strip, will the city please do at least three mowed strips so that there's a larger clearance from the sidewalk? I do believe doing so will benefit our neighborhood. I'm a big fan of parks, of the parks and open space programs. As a former member, as a former member of Prab, I truly understand the challenges that our Parks Department is facing. They have a growing workload while at the same time are having a great deal, are having to deal with dwindling resources. I did not come here this evening to criticize parks, I came here to ask you to allow for a few more feet of mowed area near the sidewalks along our greenway. And before I leave the podium, I would like to thank you, staff, and particularly the Banker Land Council for the flood control mitigation improvements along Left Hand Creek, although I do miss the big trees that once grew there. I sat here in these chambers when this project was being discussed by the Land Council. It was hard to imagine at that time how it would eventually turn out. I love the new pedestrian bridge near Pike, and the way this section of the greenway was designed. I see a lot more people riding bikes and walking along the greenway, I think because the area is so nice now. I even seen a blue heron every now and then waiting in the creek near the bridge. This project has been a great improvement for Southmore Park. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Gina Starr. Is there a Gina Starr here?
Hi. I just moved to Longmont, I live at seventeen seventy-two Sunlight Drive. That was the year the British freed the slaves. Anyway, I just wanted to say that this bike belt in back of Sunlight Drive has been really great, that's one of the reasons I moved here from California, is to have this wonderful state, and all its gorgeousness, and when I'm walking my dog, I get mosquito bites, you know, and it's because they're not mowing next to the creek. So I'd appreciate it if you'd take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Beverly Stokes.
Beverly Stokes Clary, seventeen sixty Sunlight Drive. Honorable mayor and council members, I am here also to ask you to please increase the mowing distance from the sidewalk back. Charlie failed to mention that three years ago, he was bitten by a mosquito, and he had West Nile. When Charlie came out to talk to us, Charlie that works for you, he said, "Well, the good thing is, he'll never get it again," because he had it, which is true. But I can tell you, even though I was not the person suffering, it's not a pleasant experience, and he was hospitalized for three days as a result of this. Not only, as Gina stated, and my husband stated, the mosquitoes are terrible. I went out to water my flowers before attending, here's one right here. And I would show you others, but it would probably clear the room. So please, seriously, on a more serious note, please consider mowing. I've timed it, it's exactly three minutes from one end to the other. And I, at one point, threatened to go and get a riding lawnmower of my own and do it, but my husband says, "You can't do that, they'll arrest you." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kimberly Gibbs. Kimberly Gibbs here. All right, Strider Benson.
I'm sorry, she may be out, I'll check again. Strider Benson, nine fifty-one Seventeenth Avenue. Yeah, I show up once in a while. I have had two bike wrecks in the last five days. One of them, I got cut off on a left-hand turn and blocked by a big truck coming down at Lyons, and I had to throw the bike down to keep from hitting him, so right near where they killed that biker three months ago. And then a little one today. But in between, I did a hundred-mile race up to Esther's parking back, so, and feels good having survived it. First time I ever broke seven hours biking time on that, although the last twenty-five miles was severe, because we had a record heat that day. And I won't even enter my seventh decade until tomorrow. So I'd like to point out a couple of things. As you know, I'm concerned about the destruction of the city of Detroit, and the basic idea behind it, it's a model city for the disruption of American society, American democratic society. And one of the game plans behind it that people don't realize is to steal the Detroit Art Museum, which has Van Gogh, and Matisse, and Picasso, and Cezanne. That's the whole idea, you put a dictator over the city, and then you sell it to one of your friends for almost nothing. That is part of the game plan, along with stealing the pensions. We have a crisis in democracy in this country. You see what they're doing in North Carolina right now, and Texas, to eliminate the right to vote. Normally, I don't plug Time Magazine, but this current issue, Martin Luther King on the cover, has a lot of my friends in it, Harry Belafonte, John Lewis, Joan Baez, Bob Zellner, and others, so I would plug this one, it's good. We have trouble cutting weeds here. Well, in six counties in Texas, they're eliminating paved roads, because oil companies are making so much money, and because of the corrupt government, they don't pay any taxes, and the counties cannot pave the roads anymore. So they're in the process of destroying them to save on, save on resources. Let's pay attention, our democratic society is under assault from the homeland, and don't forget to vote when anything comes up. And democracy, as we see here tonight, still could work if people weren't corrupt, and let's stop being corrupt. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. So is there anybody else from the audience that'd like to speak, Public Invited to Be Heard?
Sure, I will.
Okay, before you state your name and address.
I'd like to thank the city of Longmont, the city of Louisville, and the city of Erie for putting their tornado sirens on that day when the tornadoes were definitely getting their way through the area of Erie, and also almost to the city of Louisville. I just want to thank you, Mayor Dennis, for doing the best for our city. And you're making it very true that we are Longmontarians, and that we are true to our city, and that we are true to our cities. And I was in Minnesota, and definitely, there's a lot of skeeters out there that are biting everybody out there, and they are also getting the West Nile virus as well. And I just want to say to all the Boulder County, and our city of Longmont, that we should definitely get rid of the mosquitoes before it's too late, because I don't want to see the severe virus that happened a few years ago to my dear friend who almost died of the N1H1 flu. So I just wanted to say good luck to all of you, and just want to let you guys know there will be two northbound trains heading their way with a lot of freight, so good luck.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience that'd like to, come forward and state your name and address?
Oh, I forgot, my address is five hundred Lashley, unit forty-two, sorry.
All right, thank you. Just start out with stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Kyle Lordson. I live at twenty-two twenty-six Mariner Drive, which is just north of Magentus Lake. For four years, I have been talking to the Parkson Recreation about the mowing aspects which go along with exactly what Charlie Clary is saying. But I had also been promised that items that have not happened, and I hope that that can be directed, and I hope we can get back to the normal as it was. You laid it out very, very beautifully in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, to be attractive for any homeowner out there. If that disappears, obviously, that's going, not only hurt us, but people that walk by, or right now, they enjoy it, they like to take their water, their dogs to the water, swim in it, have a little picnic down there, and so forth. Let's get back to what it was. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come down and speak? I guess seeing the line all closes, Public Invited to Be Heard. So next, we have a proclamation designating August twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen as Women's Equality Day in Longmont. Proclamation designating August twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen as Women's Equity Day in Longmont, Colorado, whereas women were granted the right to vote ninety-three years ago with the certification of the Nineteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution on August twenty-sixth, nineteen twenty, and whereas the citizens of Longmont and the League of Women Voters of Boulder County recognize the importance of Women's Equality Day, and on August twenty-sixth commemorate the victory that gave women the right to vote, and whereas women are nearly fifty percent of our workforce, the majority of students in our colleges and graduate schools, and a growing number of breadwinners in their families, and from business to medicine in our military, women are leading the fields that were closed off to them only a few decades ago. And whereas on this day, it is important to raise awareness by reflecting on how far we have come toward fully realizing the basic freedoms enshrined in our founding documents, rededicating ourselves to closing the gaps that remain, and continuing to widen the doors of opportunities for all citizens. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Al Combs, mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in thee and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim August twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen as Women's Equality Day in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to recognize its significance. So I'd like to invite the people here to receive this award, and if you'd like to make any statement.
I'm Prudence Larson, three seventeen Sherman Street, and why don't you each just quickly give your name and address?
I'm Kay Palmer Martian, at four five eight Greenwood Lane, Longmont eight oh five oh four.
I'm Lynn Waigley, twenty-nine thirty-five Bowline Place.
I'm Constance Holland, thirteen oh nine Eighth Avenue, eight oh five oh one.
Ruth Standler, eleven twenty-three Purdue Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for issuing this proclamation. We are proud to accept the proclamation on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Boulder County. We all need to be reminded that the mothers and grandmothers of some of us in this room were among those who did not have the right to vote until nineteen twenty. Isn't that incredible? The League of Women Voters of the United States with which we are affiliated was founded ninety-three years ago out of the women's suffrage movement, because women who had successfully campaigned for the right to vote were conscious of the need to offer ongoing, nonpartisan information on public policy issues to support an informed electorate. We are still dedicated to that mission. Although we study and take action on issues, we are nonpartisan, we never endorse political parties or candidates, and we welcome both women and men as members of our organization. We hope you will all join us.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. Do you want to introduce the first?
Mayor, your first study session item is the Airport Business Plan, which will be introduced by Tim Barrett, the Airport Manager.
You don't have to go. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tim Barrett, the Airport Manager. Before this evening is the Airport Business Plan. Some of you on council may be wondering why we're returning with a business plan after we just completed an airport master plan less than a year ago, and that is a good question. The Airport Business Plan is actually a step beyond the master plan. The typical airport master plan looks at capital improvements, FAA requirements, inventory, but it doesn't really address the nuts and the bolts of how to operate the airport as a business. So, that is why we have a business plan. There's been about three iterations of this since 1997, and they typically follow an airport master plan. And we do that to make sure that we are aligning our business with what our capital projects. And before we delve into this, I want to let the council know that this is not a document that you have to approve by resolution or adopt by an ordinance. This is an internal document that we use for staff and council to help guide us to make business decisions. It's basically a work in progress. And it can, like any business plan, it's flexible. It can change from time to time. As conditions change, we can change elements of the business plan. Something is not working in the business plan, we can certainly adapt it to meet the current conditions. That being said, we've been working on this airport business plan for a little over a year. We started it right after the master plan was adopted by council. And the Airport Advisory Board did spend a fair amount of time on this. As Councilmember Witt can attest, she was at many of those meetings where we've talked about this. And the Airport Board put in their full share of time on this as well. And I would like to point out that we have two of our board members that are going to help with this presentation tonight. On my immediate left is Don Dulce, the chairman, and sitting next to Don is Mary Jo Yates. And they were instrumental in helping putting a lot of this together, and I thought that they could share in the presentation tonight. This airport business plan is before you, has changed quite a lot from the last iteration that we did. And I'd kind of like to count Councilman Samori for helping us out with this. He found the business plan that an airport did in San Marcos, Texas, San Marcos Regional Airport. And we had a chance to look at that document, and we changed our business plan completely. And it's a little bit more inclusive. It's definitely longer than our past business plans and includes a lot more information. We're not going to go over each page of it tonight, but we've got a few slides that we're going to show you that'll take you through what we're planning on doing. So, the brief history of the plan, we started this out in 1997. As with most business plans, it takes you through the normal elements which are up on the screen. We did some in-depth research on all of those categories, and they're all spelled out in the content of the plan that's attached with the council communication. Most business plans have a content that is similar to that, and we have adopted that to meet the airport needs. No business plan can be complete without a mission statement. One of the great things that we learned as we went through the master plan is we were able to gauge a lot of the community interest in what they wanted to see and what they felt the airport should represent in Longmont. One of the things that I don't think is surprising that came out is we do attract a lot of visitors, whether that's for business or for leisure purposes. We are the closest airport to Rocky Mountain National Park. And during the summer, if you're out at the airport, you see our aircraft parking ramp completely full, and Hertz and Enterprise are bringing out cars on a daily basis to folks that are coming in and heading up into the mountains. We also know that our airport is responsible for promoting the general aviation. And one of the other big things that came out through the master plan is, yeah, we do have a pretty good economic impact to the community. When we were talking through the airport business plan, actually, the city manager challenged us to come up with a vision statement. He felt that was an important part, and we spent a lot of time at the Airport Advisory Board on that. First of all, we are a small general aviation airport, and we do have an element of leisure activity. We do serve those needs. We also have to look at the airport more as a business tool for the community because quite a lot of the business community does use the airport. As a reminder, we get Seagate, Amgen, Home Depot, Lowe's, Walmart, Wells Fargo, A.G. Edwards, they all come in and out of the airport, plus a lot of people that do business with them come in and out of the airport. And lastly, we want to make sure that we're hitting the full spectrum of the aviation services that the community desires. Going into the market summary, in which we compared ourselves to other areas, I'm going to turn that over to Don for this portion of the presentation and let Don take you through some of the market summary items.
Thank you, Tim. Longmont competes with a number of front-range airports, and eight of them are within our region, and six were considered for this study. We left out DIA and Centennial because they're much larger airports and they have large commercial operations. So, the airports that we're considering are shown here. From a market analysis point of view, it indicates that Longmont Vance Brand Airport ranks fourth in annual aircraft operations. We're around 77,000. Some of the larger airports are up in the 120,000 operations range. Our airport ranks third in the number of aircraft based amongst the study group, and we are unfortunately the second lowest relative to the revenue that we produce. The average revenue is around 33.4 cents a square foot when considering the other five airports. Longmont's currently at 24.6 cents per square foot. All the other airports also have owner-hanger facilities that they own, and that helps them produce revenue. And the other airports offer lease terms that are in excess of 25 years. For instance, Front Range Airport offers leases up to 40 years, and Metro Airport and Boulder are 30-year leases now. And we have 25-year leases available at Fort Collins Airport in Greeley. And Tim will be commenting further about some of the lease term details. From a market analysis point of view, additionally, Longmont Airport lacks some of the very desirable infrastructure and amenities that we would like to have. An ILS landing system is very important and would benefit the airport greatly. Snow and ground sweeping equipment to clear the ramps, taxiways, and runways would be very beneficial. Local businesses like Amgen and Seagate, as Tim mentioned, and their suppliers have requested a longer runway. And most of those companies use the facilities at Metro right now and then drive here. We'd rather see them be landing here and using our services. Other organizations have also approached the airport about having larger hangar storage for turboprops and turbojet aircraft. And many have requested a modern visitor center, terminal building, and a restaurant. And I'm happy to report that the request for quote on an airport has already been evaluated and that should be underway. Longer lease terms would also favorably assist the developers and lenders in getting their projects underway. Currently, it's very difficult to operate under a 20-year lease. And even though we currently lack some of these amenities, this business plan addresses an approach to solving the problems. Mary Jo, are you going to take us through the?
Hi, I'm going to take you through the airport development plan. And this all is from the master plan that was approved last year. And everything in here is, what we've done is we've taken the five capital projects that are most important for the airport to be able to support improved economic and business development citywide. The first one here is the runway extension. That is a very major project. And we intend to start that in 2015 with the environmental assessment being done then. In 2016, we would move forward with property acquisition to actually extend the runway and begin construction on the runway in 2017. This is completely dependent on federal funding for this because this is such a large project. It would be according to their funds. Number two is the visitor's center terminal building, and that is going to be a joint public and private cooperation. With Lead Aviation, our new FBO on field, they've shown extreme interest in getting this done, and we're hopefully going to see some forward movement on that in 2014. Aircraft housing. Discussions are already underway concerning the building of new hangars on the airport, so we expect to have that 2014 to 2015, sometime in that timeframe. The expanded aircraft parking is one of the major issues, but we have that in our master plan is scheduled for around 2019. Security enhancements, we are already under grant for $400,000 to do that, and we intend to have that finished in 2014. These would be the five projects that we feel are essential to move forward with the airport and our economic and business development. I'm going to give a quick intro into our financial analysis, and then Tim will take over and answer more, give more details to it and probably answer any questions you might have. As you can see, we have three major sources of revenue, and that's our airport leases, the fuel flowage fees, and the miscellaneous revenue. By far, airport leases are the big one in terms of revenue, providing over 80% of our revenue at this point. In 2014, we're forecasted to have revenue of $325,684, and that comes from our airport fund statement, which is a part of your packet. It's Page 27 of the business plan. So, if you want to look at those numbers, we just felt to go through those details, I know you guys are going to review that extensively here soon. So, anyway, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Tim to finalize the financial analysis.
I am a member of the council. In regard to the financial analysis, we all know the budget's coming, and there's going to be some in-depth discussion on that, so we didn't want to overload you with a bunch of spreadsheets and fund statements this evening. But as Mary Jo said, the majority of our leases, all of our revenue comes from the majority of our leases, 83%, and that's in aviation revenue. What this business plan really focuses on is funding revenue from other sources than aviation. And we're looking for some non-aviation revenue sources. One of the things that are called out in the business plan are looking for car rental facilities, the restaurant that we have that we anticipate will be opening in 2014, looking for cooperative facilities and educational institutions and so forth. While the leases are the majority of the revenue, as this council knows, in the past three months, I've been showing up at a lot of our leases, and we've been turning them over from the old lease rates of 8 to 10 cents a square foot up to 26 cents a square foot. But between this year and 2017, we've got 37 of them that are going to turn over, and that's one of the reasons we're going to be asking for a lease rate increase because we have the potential to increase our revenue there as well as correct to the market rate. Most of the lease revenue that we use is for operations and maintenance and grant matches at the airport, which is kind of a traditional revenue source that we have at the airport right now. We're still going to be dependent upon grant opportunities to do any type of capital projects at the airport. Over the last five years, you can see the CPI increase. Our merit average is about 2.3% a year. Most airports typically use the Consumer Price Index, but in the past few years, just because of the economy, the CPI has been kind of low. So, at this time, we can really only fund our major capital projects by taking advantage of the grant opportunities. We've had lots of discussions with this council, nobody around, the staff members, that it would be great to improve the aesthetics of the airport, especially that front entrance corridor. But with the airport fund the way it is, we really have to look at winning on some other revenue sources so that we can free up those funds that we need for grant match and use the other funds to help accomplish some of the items that are on our wish list. And that's why we put this business plan together. One of the sequestration is in place. Prior to this year, our grant match used to be 5% in the federal. It jumped back up to 10%. When the sequestration ends, there is going to be pending legislation before Congress that they move the match back to 5%, which would help out significantly in our case. So, right now, in our financial analysis, and we will get into this more in-depth when we present the budget, we're kind of in a state of flux. Continuing forward with grants, we may not be able to support all of our grant matches as expected unless we can bring in some new revenue sources and decrease expenses. Now, yes, we will have a revenue increase as these leases turn over, but it's not enough to accomplish everything that's on our wish list. And this plan is flexible enough that we can change it to meet what our current needs are and adapt to the situation. And obviously, we have to continue to go for those grants because it's a revenue source that we still really need. There is a matter I want to bring up to council this evening, and this is not in particular to the airport alone. This applies citywide. And this is a program that is sponsored by the state of Colorado, the State of Colorado Infrastructure Bank. You have to be a government or a private party engaged with a government contract to take advantage of this program. There's lots of municipalities that participate in this. As you can see by the slide, there's a ten-year repayment, and the interest rate is extremely low and is deferred for two years. Other municipalities have done this to build libraries, to purchase operations equipment such as snowplows, mowing equipment, participate in gardens, build firehouses, et cetera. There has to be a cap demand on, which you can borrow, specifically for the airport needs, it'd be about $750,000. We've talked to the state a little bit about this because as you look at the repayment on that, our lease revenues, being our largest revenue producer, would have to be used for that repayment. One thing that would probably set the airport back if we decided to engage in this program is that if we did go for a loan, maybe to build hangars or acquire equipment, that money that we are using can no longer be used for the grant match opportunity. So, it's a trade-off depending on the business plan and what we foresee with the FAA and the state on what projects are coming up and whether we would be able to take advantage of this. Now, we haven't fleshed this out completely yet, and I'm sure the finance department will probably have some questions for us on this, but it is a program that should probably be looked at. In the past, this council has looked at lending money to different departments from other departments and paying them back. We took out a loan for the U Creek Clubhouse. There's lots of opportunities that are available with this program that can only benefit the airport, but could be available citywide to help us accomplish some of the capital projects that we need if the revenue sources aren't there. So, I just wanted to pick that up for the night so that maybe you guys would keep that in the back of your head for something to think about. And I'm going to pop this back over to Mary Jo for just a second.
Thanks, Tim. The Airport Action Plan is one of the most important parts of our business plan. It's actually our working plan for the next four to five years, hopefully to bring more business and more businesses to the community. At the conclusion of this, Don, or Tim, is going to go over the five points here, elements that will require council approval for us to move forward. But now, Don is going to go over our five priorities for moving forward with our action plan. Don?
Thank you.
of this. Now, we haven't fleshed this out completely yet, and I'm sure the finance department will probably have some questions for us on this, but it is a program that should probably be looked at. In the past, this council has looked at lending money to different departments from other departments and paying them back. We took out a loan for the U Creek Clubhouse. There's lots of opportunities that are available with this program that can only benefit the airport, but could be available citywide to help us accomplish some of the capital projects that we need if the revenue sources aren't there. So I just wanted to pick that up tonight so that maybe you guys would keep that in the back of your head for something to think about. And I'm going to pop this back over to Mary Jo for just a second.
Thanks, Tim. The airport action plan is one of the most important parts of our business plan. It's actually our working plan for the next four to five years, hopefully to bring more business and more businesses to the community. At the conclusion of this, Don, our Tim, is going to go over the five points here, elements that will require council approval for us to move forward. But now, Don is going to go over our five priorities for moving forward with our action plan. Don?
Thank you. As you can see from this slide, two of our items have already been addressed. The meeting between the FAA, airport management, council members, and the Colorado Division of Aeronautics has taken place, and it has certainly aided getting the land acquisition, environmental, and runway extension timeframes established. Pursuit of airport improvement grants to improve aviation infrastructure and safety are underway. As was mentioned, we have the fencing money secured, and that project will be underway shortly and should be completed in 2014. The need for longer-term leases has already been mentioned several times, and Tim is going to still provide some additional commentary on that. For construction of a visitor center and city-owned hangars, the infrastructure bank provides that program, a program for cities to consider, and I would ask council to consider having, asking the finance director to truly explore this program. I think it is something that can really work for us. And a full-service fixed-based operator has been identified and is in the process of becoming integrated onto the airport at this time.
Okay, I think we've put you several times now with the lease term increase. Just wanted to set you up for this. There are separate divisions within the city that use leases. The most prominent ones are up on the split on the screen for you. We are restricted by the charter, which states that we can only enter into leases for 20 There are some pitfalls for that, especially when you start looking at financing improvements on leased property. The short-term lease, it just discourages large investments. Back in 1998, 1999, we had the opportunity to have a company on the airport called Sky Fund One. They did some aircraft maintenance on Pilatus aircraft, but they also built amusement park rides. If you've ever seen E-Lich down there, they had that real tall pole where they strapped people into that harness and let them fly out. That was their business, and they've got them in amusement parks all over. They wanted to have a lease on the airport, they wanted the lease in excess of 20-year terms in order to work a lending institution for the financing, and they could not get it here. In turn, they ended up going to Florida. They did go run an airport in Florida, near Cola, and they ended up there with a 30-year lease, and as you can see from amusement parks, they've had a successful business. The short-term leases, what kind of turns business off for large investments? If you build a regular aircraft hangar, the construction cost amount is somewhere around $60,000 to $80,000. You can go in and get the loan on that on a 20 years because you're looking at 80% financing on that. It's less than a mortgage. But when you start talking significant sums of money upwards of $1 million, banks are typically afraid to lend on a short-term lease like that. They will do it in some instances, but it takes a long time to pay out that loan at the end with the huge loan payment so that the bank feels safe. Also, when you make that kind of investment, the money that you're making in return for operating the business at the airport is going for the loan payment instead of reinvesting into your business operation on the airport. If you look at most places that will enter into a lease, or most businesses around that will enter into a lease, they'll for 20, 30 years so that they have a chance to recoup their investment, especially when they are building a building. And at the airport, we don't build the buildings that private developers do, and they need that time to recover their capital investment. Those are some of the pitfalls that we realize, and this has happened a few times on the airport. We would hope to move forward in a more business-friendly way, but as we look at Walmart, not just the airport, we look at Walmart, there's opportunities that could present themselves in the near future as we move forward with an economic development plan citywide. There's some properties on Main Street that we lease out right now that used to be a car facility. We've got some vacant properties at the old Walmart and the Kmart. Who knows what those opportunities are going to present themselves to the city, whether we end up as a property owner on some of those or at a private partnership. But if we come into the city for a lease, anyone that's going to make a significant investment is going to want to turn longer than 20 years. This does require a charter change, which requires a vote of the public, so. So there's five considerations that we'd like you to take a look at tonight. And again, I'm not asking you to vote on the adoption of this plan. This plan is, again, flexible, but we are looking for some direction. I've put some analysis down on your council communication on each one of those. We realize initiating a valid initiative is not going to be for 2013. We also realize that any change to the charter is going to open up a wider, broader policy discussion with many other departments in the city, as there may be some other items in the charter that may need to be looked at, not only from a staff perspective, but maybe some council member perspectives. If they are going to look at that, we would like to shoot for 2013. As the city manager has stated, it's more fair through the budget system. We're going to go through a budget reset and look at a variety of different items, and the administrative transfer fee is one of them. We feel at the airport that the administrative transfer fee should be reduced to the airport to cover only the actual costs. There is a copy of the administrative transfer fee on the breakdown in your packet this evening, and I can answer questions on that if you have them. We have some of the aggressive marketing and action plan within the business plan. I don't know if we can put that, providing we can do it within our budget limitations. As staff members, we will look at those members. If we feel it's wanted, we would move forward with it. If we feel it's something that should, the council should be aware, we will bring it to council. But with the funds that we have at the airport, it's going to be limited to what we feel that we can move forward with on a year-to-year basis. I don't understand, again, we have specific items, but we kind of left it general for a reason. We have development incentive packages for other developments within the city, whether it's a waiver on rates or fees or a reduction in permit fees. We feel that in the right circumstances, for the right business opportunities at the airport, we should be able to offer some type of incentive package as well. What those look like, well, they'd be tailored to the individual project at the time, and we would have to bring that forward to council. But if you don't believe, if the council doesn't believe us in the area we should go in, we can take it off the count, we can take it out of the table. If council believes that we should move forward with something that, we will leave it in the plan and will evaluate it on a case-by-case basis. And then directly coming with the revenue question, it's been a while since we've done a lease rate increase at the airport. We have discussed this at the airport advisory board on four separate times in 12, in 2012, and a couple of separate times separately and with the business plan in 2013. The board has unanimously agreed that it's time that we move up to market rate and go from the 26.45 cents a square foot up to 34, which puts us on a more level field with the other airports that we compete with. So based on that, we're here to answer any questions that you might have, and if possible, maybe some direction on a couple of those items.
Councilmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This is your board. Do you want to go first, Councilmember? I guess I've got a few que-- that's an awesome slide of a paper airplane, but can we go back one to the questions? Thank you. Quick question. So number one, why, so would it be possible, where's Eugene? Eugene, I mean, you don't have to come up, just, you can go like this or like this, and Harold also for you. My question is, isn't it possible to only address the airport issue regarding the leases? So that's the first question. Can we not have, can we not direct staff to prepare ballot language to amend the city charter to allow the city to enter into lease agreements at the airport for terms longer than 20 years? So it would be like a but for, meaning we keep the charter the way it is and say but for that?
So I'm not sure. I think we could, but I think we would also want to take a broader look at the other items that we have to deal with on a regular basis versus just making it specific to the airport.
Okay. My next question is, what would it be? Well, I mean, as far as the airport goes, how long would that term, what are you recommending? If it's not 20 years? I can understand, I mean, I can understand if you start leasing property for 40, 50, 100 years, it's like selling the city, and if we want to do something, we can't do it. And so what's the number of years that you would recommend, only as it pertains to the airport, of course?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley? In this particular item, we would look to go to leases for at least 30 years. That is sufficient time from the lending institutions that we've had the discussion with for a period that they would feel comfortable providing that amount of money to recoup on a lease.
Okay. Next, the administrative transfer fee. I assume that all, I guess the question would be, how would that change? What percentage would that be saving you, and why should the airport be let out of it and not everybody in the city?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley? Again, going back to, Harold was going to probably address this as part of the budget reset.
Let me jump in on a couple of points. Back to your first question. The term limit typically in anything we do, but when you really see this related to airports, it is dependent on the capital investment. And where airports really become a little unique is because, remember, we own the ground. They build the buildings, and in a lot of cases, once that terms up, the, whomever owns the building runs the risk of not having that building at the end. So depending on how you work that, I mean, there's an added complexity in airports just because of that issue. And I've actually seen that before, where in a previous city I worked in, you had someone that built a building, lease ran out, and then you have special bidding procedures that you have to go through under FAA regs, and so there was some uncertainty in there. So added dimension that you get when you move into the airport world. In terms of the ATF, as we have entered the first phases, we have been looking at the ATF fee, and that is calculated, the administrative transfer fee, that's calculated for basically every division in the organization outside of the general fund. And what the administrative transfer fee calculates is, for example, the time that I spend in various enterprise funds, the time that HR spends in various enterprise funds, legal, finance, we start ETFs, we start going down the list. And so at this point, if you look at it in terms of meeting the FAA regs, if we were audited, we would have to show how those transfers are accurate based on the numbers that we have. Or you can, the other approach that I've seen the FAA recognize in the past as an indirect cost allocation study. So they've done both. If we were to change it, there would be a difference between how we treat other enterprise funds, and that is something that we would have to consider. And fundamentally, what could happen in that allocation is that it looks like a general fund subsidy to the airport enterprise fund when you go through the numbers. And so you really have to examine the numbers as you're going through that ATF. And I can tell you that that's what we're doing now through the budget reset process. We've just adjusted the ETFs.
Okay, so I guess, because what I'm thinking, one, what would the other enterprise fund directors think? That's number one. And number two, if we're already providing 83% of our revenues from lease, from leases, an eight cents increase is a 20% increase, which is higher than the 17% to go from 83% to 100%, which would mean that even with, as it is, we cover the costs, even if we didn't change the administrative transfer fee, correct? Technically, if everybody overnight was paying 34 cents per square foot?
If you went to the new lease rate.
Tim's like, no, no, let me talk, let me talk. You sort of say, if everybody had the new lease rate?
Gosh, I hate to use a word from a campaign, but that sounds like fuzzy math.
No, exactly. No, but my question is that if we're going to increase the, if we're going to increase the lease rate by eight cents to 34 cents, okay? So 20% is 6.8 cents. So we're increasing the lease per square foot by over 20 cents, or by over 20%. So what I'm saying is, in the report, 83% of total revenues generated by the airport are through those lease rates. So if our revenues increase by more than 20%, what I'm saying is, we're going to crack load more money in our leases, and that's where most of our revenues come from, right?
Correct, but you're not increasing the 100% of leases, you're only increasing the 37 that are out there that will be renewed.
Yeah.
Right? You're not applying the 34 cents to all 124 leases that are out there, only the 37 that are up for renewal.
Gotcha. Okay, I understand. And then finally, number five, your 34 cents per square foot, does everybody, do you charge everybody the same cost per square foot, or is that up to 34 cents?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley? The lease rate is effective at the time that you sign your lease. So for example, in 2012, the lease rate was 25.95 cents a square foot. Because the consumer price index was added after the first of the year, it is now 26.45. So if you signed a lease in 2012, your lease rate was 29.95. In 2013, it's 26.45. If we bring forward a maintenance and move it to 34 cents, all the new leases at that point will be at 34 cents, and then each year, they will increase according to the consumer price index.
So I, the only reason I'm asking questions, I'm assuming there's better real estate at the airport, meaning, I mean, I would want, I mean, not all places are equal, right? I mean, I'm sure, if I drive an airplane, don't you want to be near certain things? Don't want to walk as far? Maybe you get door dings in some spots, not in others? I mean, so I guess what I'm asking is, do we charge the same, every time we get, is it geographically dependent?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley? It is not geographically dependent. We cannot charge more for one piece of property for a lease rate than we do for another because we'd be discriminating in our leasing practices against an operator which the FAA would frown upon.
You have answered my questions, Mr. Barr. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to absolutely support all five of these, just so you know, but particularly number one, I think that will impact not only the airport, but I think it will have positive repercussions throughout the city. For some reason, golf courses coming to mind, the investments that the, are the folks who do the restaurant concessions, thank you, words. Oh, it's that time of night. The investments that folks make in other parts of the city on property that is the city's, it would be beneficial across the board. So I'm in full support of that. Obviously, Harold is already working on number two. Number three, absolutely, as long as there's money there, and the incentives, we're always looking to be able to encourage more development at the airport. I think we're really positioning the airport in a good way to become the best little airport along the front range, and great place to do business, great place to have your leisure aircraft as well. And the increase in the rate is only fair, and it's not going to be pulling in all sorts of money. What we want, what we want is for the, all of our enterprise funds to be self-sustaining, and we can't do that if we are not charging the appropriate square footage rate. So I fully support all of these initiatives and would be glad to talk to any council members one-on-one if you have any additional comments.
I just have a quick question for you, Tim. It seems like, looking at this data, that for several years, we've been lagging the market in terms of lease rates. Is that because we didn't have the infrastructure out there, like a nice terminal, visitor center, restaurant that would demand higher lease rates? Or why is, can you maybe shed some light on why we've kind of always lagged the market in lease rates?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, we do a lease rate survey about every two years. I'm pretty in touch with the other airports, so really, I kind of have a feeling on what they're doing every year. From 2007 until 2009, we were right in the ballpark. About 2011, some of the other airports jumped way ahead of us, and that's been a little bit of a resurgence of the market, especially for the aviation faction. The airports like Jeffco and Centennial, they go up a little bit higher just because of the sheer volume. If you look at the other front-range airports, they have bumped up in the last couple of years, and this was right when we were doing our lease rate analysis, as we were putting the business the business plan together, and we saw with their increases, it was time to increase ours as well. I don't know that we've necessarily lagged behind. I think everybody kind of went up in the same two-year timeframe.
Thank you.
Hi, Councilmembers Somory.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm good with two, three, four, and five, so I won't go into any detail there. I do have some questions about number one. If I were to sign a lease in 2012, you said the lease rate would have been 29 plus some odd cents, right? Or 26, whichever one. Is that fixed for 20 years, or is it an escalation clause every so many years within it?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmembers Somory, right now, it's a fixed lease rate. At 20 years, you come in at the lease rate you are, and then the only increases according to the Consumer Price Index. Obviously, if we increased to a 30-year lease, we will probably switch to what some other airports do and put escalator clauses in there at every five-year period.
So why can't we do that currently at the 20-year lease?
Because it's below the standard of the Consumer Price Index. On a 20-year lease, it keeps our lease rates consistent with what the other airports, we could try to jump it up, but will that hurt us in the long run on a short lease or help us?
Where else do they have to go? If they spend the money on building it, I mean, I'm not, okay, don't take it the wrong way. But I think we ought to investigate that as a possibility. And what would be wrong with having consecutive 20-year leases that are automatically renewable, instead of having to renew them through council approval, so you don't have to change the charter?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Somory, we've had this discussion with the city attorney's office. If we have an automatic renewal in the lease, it constitutes a lease longer than the 20-year period for the city plan. Because we are guaranteeing the right to occupy city property for more than 20 years, which, according to the charter, we can't not do.
Okay, but every time you have brought a renewal lease to us, I haven't witnessed any being denied. So I understand the logic behind it, but I'm sure there's ways to work around it if we're innovative enough in our approach and thinking. Um, you can always have a termination clause that says if they violate certain rules, then it won't automatically be renewed, or if somebody gives notice 30 or 60 days, it won't be automatically renewed. But I think there has got to be a way without having to change the char, the charter per se, to be able to address it.
So I think what we're asking today is direction from council for us to look at this in, in more detail. Um, but, but Tim is correct, it's that automatic renewal that throws everything into a different equation. And if I can also add, I think, number two, when we look at the administrative transfer fees, what I would suggest is, we're doing that through our budget reset process. That is something that we need to be very careful with, because if we just reduce it without that methodology coming in, then what we've done is, we've maybe solved an issue over here, but we've created an issue over here, and then those numbers need to be accurate anyway, based on, on the fees that we charge for those services. So I would suggest that number two, we, we're, we're looking at it now with the budget process, but I don't, we need to be careful just coming in and saying we're gonna reduce it.
So, um, if we give you direction to look at one, three, four, and five? Everybody okay with that?
Mayor, members of council, if, if that is indeed the way that the council's going, uh, with that direction, I would bring back an ordinance at a regular session to increase the lease rate. I think we've got a clear indication as staff this evening that we would look at the ballot initiative for 2014 and address it as a, a policy-wide discussion among all the city departments, as well as a discussion with the council. As far as number two, we are going to address that, and, uh, three and four are obvious, we will bring that back on a case-by-case basis.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to address a, a couple of, um, of items in the report itself. Um, on page 13 of the 27-page report, it would be page 25 of our electronic packet, or 20, yeah, 25 of electronic in the paper packet. When we're looking at the, um, marketing profile, um, the city is already a member of Longmont Area Economic Council, um, well, we give them a lot of support through our partnership. So my question would be, um, are we not, um, utilizing, um, all of our, and leveraging all of the investment we make in partnership with LAEC for you guys to piggyback on what the city does in general? First question. Same thing with the area, uh, Chamber of Commerce, because we pay a lot of money for our membership, and you would be under our umbrella. So those, those two points, and then I have a couple of other questions.
Okay, Mayor, Councilmember Levinson, to, to address both those with, with the LAEC and the chamber. We do, we do have an established working relationship with them already. Most of the time, you don't see it in conjunction with the airport. I work with Wendy Nassinger on a monthly basis, updating our airport, uh, land profile and working with prospective people that are looking for, for property to lease. What we are thinking about in this strategy is hosting events out at the airport. Most of the, the chamber events, most of the area economic council events are somewhere other than the airport. So we're talking on a smaller scale than what our involvement is, but from a marketing perspective, bring them out to the airport, let's showcase what we have at the airport, do combined events with them.
Yeah, and, and, um, and the one thing I would caution about, while it's nice to make a suggestion that, you know, and a member of the airport advisory board is appointed to the public policy committee of the chamber, um, I, I don't want to send the chamber, I'd sort of like to soften that maybe. I don't want to send the chamber a message that, you know, hey, we want a member of the airport advisory board on your public policy committee. I think that's a little, you know, a strong, um, you know, kind of telling the chamber that, that we want something like that. I think that, um, I would also encourage if, um, it seems that the chamber is really good at supporting, um, member businesses. So I would, um, think that a great partnership opportunity would be for those, the fixed based operator and the other business interests at the airport to be members of the chamber. It's kind of a no-brainer. And then they get all those individual membership resources, as well as the ability to host something at the airport at their business. Um, and then, um, I, uh, share, Councilmember Somory, skepticism about the, uh, initiative, ballot initiative. Um, I really need to see some more pros and cons, um, around that, and, uh, any change to the charter is very costly election. I mean, uh, I don't know, I just remember, we do a charter amendment, it's like $60,000 to $80,000. And, uh, it could be, um, have to look in, uh, kind of the, the resources we would expend for, for that. Um, and then the administrative, administrative transfer fee, um, again, we've seen the golf enterprise fund have a lot of capital expenses with irrigation systems that need to be updated, and, um, that enterprise fund is, um, scrambling just like you are scrambling. And I think that if we reduce the transfer fee, we're gonna open the floodgates, because certainly, the golf enterprise has a lot of stresses on their budget, and less people are playing golf, and there's a lot of maintenance at the golf course, too. So there could be many other funds that make the justification that we should charge less, and, and since we're already, um, constrained with general fund, um, resources coming in, I think we do have to be careful about that. So as far as the marketing and action plan, um, I would say try to get creative, because you have, um, great people who lease your hangars out there, and you're, they're your best marketing, um, to get those hanger owners and leases, um, involved with the various, um, organizations in the city. I think that we have, you know, I do support what we can do with the economic and business development incentives. We have a lot of those in place, and, and certainly, we're always open to what businesses and what jobs are growing in any area of the city. So, um, and I think that increasing the lease rate, uh, to bring us up to market is a good thing. However, we also see that Longmont is very, very competitive for business, because, for example, our electrical rate is so low. So you have to sort of weigh whether or not you want to be at market, or would you attract maybe people to take a second look at Longmont, because our rate is slightly less. Um, uh, those are really my comments. And as far as going back to the charter amendment, I think to, uh, not have those leases really looked at for 30 years, um, you know, beside, we would end up with maybe a situation like number five, where if you have a 30-year lease rate and the CPI or that other index is not really keeping up with what you need, then you're locked into a lease rate where there's no possibility, uh, the, the term is so long that, that, uh...
He already addressed that, he said that if you do it to 30 years, they would have a five-year...
The five-year, yeah. And, and, but that could be, that could also be changed, too. So I, I'm just a little bit concerned about looking at, um, kind of a, a knee-jerk reaction on the, on the charter. It's a very serious thing to amend the charter.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I totally get the ballot initiative to extend the, uh, the 20 years to 30 years, because I used to be in the mortgage business, and when you lend money, you need 30 years, uh, in order to lend enough money to make it worthwhile. So I would, I would be in support of that. I think our administrative transfer fees do need to be looked at across the board in a policy, uh, for that, because I, I think they're a little goofy myself. Um, but that's just me. Uh, lease rates, of course, should go up, uh, we should be at market, I think that's a great idea, uh, to provide more income. Uh, so I'm okay with all of these things. I did have a question on the SWOT analysis. Under weaknesses, you have sales and use taxes deter aircraft from basing at airport. Are our sales and use taxes more different? How is that a weakness, and how can we overcome that weakness?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley, 2004 through 2007, we worked closely with the finance department, uh, so that they can collect tax on aircraft that were brought in to the airport and that are based here for six months of the year. So if it's, if you purchase a new aircraft, uh, the aircraft is considered a motor vehicle, and it is taxed appropriately. The amount of that tax after you pay a state tax is pretty excessive. We are the only airport that we can find in the front range that assesses a use tax on an aircraft.
We want to continue to do that if we're the only one?
Well, uh, part of this whole discussion in, in the business plan and on this particular issue is, people at the airport probably wouldn't have such heartburn with this tax if this tax was collected on the aircraft and returned to the airport, as opposed to the general fund. That's what, one of the weaknesses, that, that we saw as a weakness.
Okay. And also, as a threat, you have, uh, council and city employee turnover due to elections and retirements, that could also be a strength, just so you know. But I'm, I, I approve of all those considerations that you have listed.
Councilmember Santos?
Mr. Mayor Coombs, um, yeah, I'm, I'm glad that number two is being addressed within the budget. Three, four, and five, I'm fine with. Five, I'm more, uh, I don't mind bringing us up to market, as long as we're going to address, you know, hopefully, we'll address some of the, uh, amenities at the airport. Sooner or later, of course, it takes money. In the SWOT analysis, the sales and use tax, you know, I, I have clients that, uh, when they buy a piece of equipment, they have to buy, they have to pay sales and use tax. They have to pay sales and use tax on it. When, uh, certain brewers buy equipment, I'm not just talking about, you know, the pump house, but there are other brewers in town, when they buy pieces of equipment, they bring it in, sales and use tax, they, they pay it in. Um, it's the same. The, uh, ballot initiative, I, you know, I'm, I'm okay with looking at the leases in excess of 20 years, not just for the airport, but the, uh, the other leases that we look at. Um, I get that. I'm glad that we're looking at 2014 instead of 13. We have two other ballot initiatives. I, I'd hate to see us overload the ballot. Um, we overload it too much, there's another city that, you know, they're putting quite a few ballot initiatives on. Um, I feel you overload the ballot, you tend to, things start, things can drop off. So as long as we're going to at least research number one, uh, um, and analyze it a little bit more about, not only just for the airport, but for other, uh, leases throughout the city, I have no problem with. And then we'll circle back in another year and see how that all works out. I have no, you know, again, and apparently, again, number two is gonna be addressed within the, the budget for 2014.
Well, they're, um, they've gone through ETFs, for example, and what was the other? They've gone through another division and, and they risk, and, and they fine-tune that. Now, depending on the activities, when we say we're going through it, when we, when we put the pencil to it, you know, there's a chance it could go up, too, depending on the activities and what's occurring. And, and so we're, we're looking at both of those, and then we'll meet with the departments and go over that. And in this case, I just talked to Tim, and we'll go over that with him to make sure they understand where all the numbers fall and why.
Tim just might be working harder by himself.
There you go.
And I know he works hard already, so, thank you.
You know, I think, uh, one thing that Bonnie said that really resonated, yeah, I know it's hard to say in a policy, but, you know, the airport's kind of unique in a way, and it does need all these capital improvements. And if people are paying use tax on a piece of, you know, like a new engine for their plane or whatnot, I kind of like the idea fundamentally of that use tax going back to the airport instead of into our general fund. It kind of makes sense, because it is kind of a unique enterprise, but, uh, just, you know, that's just my thoughts.
Councilmember Bagley?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move that council considerations one, two, three, four, and five, uh, be made council direction to city staff, with the exception of the word initiate being changed to explore and present to council.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded.
Councilmember Levinson?
I guess, um, I would, uh, offer friendly amendment to just, um, on the number one, uh, the issue around the, um, uh, amendment that we would, um, direct staff to, uh, bring us, it back as a study item with pros and cons and comparisons from other cities' charters, too. Because I think it's not just us, if there's kind of a standard in the state of Colorado of cities, there's probably a good reason, um, I, I, you know, we could also ask Colorado municipal league attorneys to, to take a look and see, they have a statewide view on, um, these kind of, uh, issues that are in, uh, city charters across the state.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My intent by saying explore and present to council is that they need to do the reset search and then convince us of what they want to do. So rather than what they reckon, what the options are and that what we as council direct them to do. So that, that was, that was my, I mean, yes, that is, that is what I would hope they would do.
So can I ask a question?
No.
Sure. And number two, are you saying to reduce it, or are you saying to examine it in the budget process? Because number two on there says to reduce it.
Uh, yeah, I think...
Um, I would say, I, I heard, I was assuming, at least, the motion means not just automatically reduce, but it's city manager, Jim, the airport manager, explore it, and to make it part of the budget process. Is that what everyone else is? No, 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 they're, they're basically, what, yes. Basically, as long as Jim, Harold, and Tim say it's okay, I'm okay.
Sure.
So how's that for, I don't know if that's a friendly amendment, that's my own amendment.
Councilmember Somory?
I think what we heard earlier is, we need to take number two off the table, because they're already addressing it. So if you want to have a friendly amendment and delete number two and leave the other four on there, that would be, I think, what they would like to hear from us.
I think that's cleaner.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so now we have a, a motion that, that's been clarified, uh, and seconded, let's vote. Okay, passes seven to zero. All right, let's take a 10-minute break.
He saw sort of that future coming with regards to growing inventory of parts and trail needs and instituted some of those changes and initiated those. And what we've done since then is continue to deploy that throughout the city. And you actually heard that tonight. So we've got concerns on probably every greenway that we have with regards to do I like it or do I not like it? And so ultimately comes down counsel to choices and where we put resources and how much resources we put into it. So with that, Kim is going to start us off a little bit talking about those standards from the Natural Resources Division. That's her sort of role and responsibility in that arena. And then Bob is going to take it from there and talk a little bit more about some of the day-to-day operation work that he has been doing and some of the results that they're achieving. So with that, Kim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a presentation. Oh, I doubt. All right, thanks, sorry. Apologize. Over the last 20 years, the development standards for greenways have evolved, not just locally, regionally, but across the country, from more of the traditional well-manicured bluegrass to more of natural areas with native vegetation. And this is consistent with general societal values that natural areas bring to a community being improvements to water quality, desirable wildlife versus when it's manicured, you tend to have a lot more rodents. But when you have more natural areas, you have raptors and birds that tend to feed on those, you have more of a balanced ecosystem. So in 2007, as Dale mentioned, the city began looking at the overall mowing and maintenance standards for greenways, district parks, and open space areas. And the purpose was to balance the public access with societal, environmental values and appropriate uses of the city's resources to manage those systems. In addition, as you did hear, there are differing opinions on how individuals would like that managed and from a variety and for a variety of reasons. So on this list, there's a variety of purposes and benefits. And one I did want to touch on is managing weeds. Actually, allowing native grasses to grow actually helps outcompete the weeds. But it does take time once you first start letting those grasses grow. And the city is managing weeds. And this year, we actually initiated a, we developed a weed management plan and initiated a broader effort to manage weeds in the city. But like as you've heard some of our renewal efforts, we do have some backlog of weeds, which will take us a couple of years to catch up on. But when we do notice large weeds, we do try to address them right away from a variety of techniques. This is example, this is Roosevelt Park. It's one of our community parks. And community and neighborhood parks are this well-manicured bluegrass, bluegrass that is water irrigated regularly. And the purpose of that is to meet the needs of the park, being regular play, recreation, and ballgames, and special events. Then we transition into our greenways. And what this graphic is trying to depict is that there are transition zones. You have the homes, and then there is a grass area between the homes and a concrete path. And then between the path and the waterway, there's another area. And then between the waterway and another adjacent set of homes, we actually have two areas, one that's maintained in more detail right adjacent to the homes, as well as then we have the more natural area by the waterway, which is some of the area that you've heard that there's some concerns by the residents. So getting a little more detail, between homes and a concrete path or a trail, we do mow that weekly or every other week, depending on the type of irrigation and the grasses that are in that area. But it is kept short and manicured. Then between the concrete path and the waterway, this is actually considered a no-mow area. It's usually natural and linked. And then depending on when areas were developed in the community, some have irrigation and some do not. And then you will note that in some of these areas, there is a swath mowed along the greenway, and that has to do with the amount of weeds in the area. Like I said, we were trying to get it under control. But in those interface areas, you often do see more weeds. And when it's the majority of weeds, it's easier to mow it, at least initially to get it under control. So this is an example, to the left, you know, it's cut off our home, so it's well-manicured. And then on the right are our natural grasses. And then this is an example of homes that back up to a natural area, and the creek is to the left. You can't see it on the diagram, but this is what the typical swath looks like. And it's usually 10 to 12 feet. And once again, it's mowed either every couple of weeks, even three or four times a year, depending on the amount of irrigation. The more irrigation, the faster the grass grows, meaning we would need to get out there and manage it more frequently. And then this is a diagram where there's a street. You have homes, a street, and then kind of a median grassy area, and then a concrete path. And this area, this is mowed every other week typically unless it's not irrigated, which we do have areas around the community. And this is typical and mimics a lot of areas along arterials or how we manage our right-of-ways. And then adjacent to the concrete path between the waterway, once again, is a no-mow area unless we're trying to manage for weeds, and then it'll be just one swath. So this is example of the left-hand greenway, where on your left is the natural area in the creek, and on the right is the more frequently mowed area adjacent to the road. And this is an example similar to that of an arterial where we do mow in the median The state-run greenway is a little different. It's more natural on both sides. We typically, except for in a couple of locations, do not have residences. So there's two things. We do mow on one, a swath on one side, and that's to aid in sweeping and cleaning of the greenway, because if you have tall grass, if you try to sweep it, it comes back on it. So we do it to aid that maintenance. And then we do not mow along the crusher find trail unless for some reason there's a large number of weeds, or if the grasses get so tall that they fall over and are blocking that path. And then we will do mow it once a year. One of the things that we're initiating is using, developing some materials for more public education. So we haven't finished this brochure yet. We're just working on it and also some direction changes. We want to make sure we have the correct information in here. But with this, we're going to have it out on the website. We are going to mail it to all the residences that live along those greenways. We're going to go meet with the Neighborhood Group Leaders Association. And staff and our contractors that do mowing and maintenance will also have these with them, because oftentimes they're the frontlinemen who get the questions and some of the issues in the past. And then when staff have been asked, or contractors, or when the residents would like something else, they just went out and did it. So we're using this to try to help in educating the public. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bob to talk about more of the maintenance issues.
Can I ask a quick question?
I just want to touch on one issue that was in our packet that you hadn't mentioned, the cost savings, which were pretty significant year over year in these policy changes. Because I know we've been talking a lot about parts operation and green, parts and greenways operations and maintenance. So can you tell us what the difference in cost has been every year to change the standard?
I think that's actually coming in Bob's presentation.
I'm sorry, the packet was right after some of the historical notes you made, so that's why I ask.
Mayor and Council, Bob Allen, Operations Manager, Public Works, Natural Resources. I think we'll get to that question. If it's not specific enough, then please ask it again. So. Sorry. That works better. Can I work this here? So kind of switching gears here a little bit, I wanted to talk about some of the work we've been doing to, I'll call it add value in our operations and parks maintenance. We started in 2011 and really in part from some of the direction that you've given us, you know, to look at efficiencies there, and look at ways to manage infrastructure as well. This focuses more on operations, but it'll give you a little bit of a picture of what we've worked on over the last couple of years. Our assessment indicated that we had really good, good green infrastructure and green maintenance out in the park system, which was good, because that's what most people see when they go out there, and that's what they expect to see. Unfortunately, the facilities probably were not quite up to that same standard. And they varied pretty widely from some things that were in good condition, that were fairly new, some that were in poor condition, and then obviously some that were in unsafe condition. And I say obviously because I think it was in 2012, about a year and a half ago, we presented to you some issues that we discovered with equipment out, in that case skate parks that were out in the system that were really not safe. And that led us to go and do more surveys of what was out there and what their conditions are. Mechanical equipment, a lot of the equipment that the users of the parks don't see, anything from, you know, the electrical lighting to pumps and motors and fans and variable frequency drives and equipment like that in the pump stations, relatively poor condition. A lot of it was not operable. Some had not been installed correctly. So a lot of problems, a lot of expense. And I'll show some pictures just to show you kind of the magnitude of that equipment. Work plans, standards, priorities, and procedures did not exist in the operations. But I will say the staff was very knowledgeable, very passionate about the work they did. But their approaches were a lot more informal than I think the park system needed. Supervisors spent most of their time providing daily direction and shuttling tools to employees, which is pretty indicative of an informal system of operation. Employees lacked mechanical maintenance skills. Once again, you know, this was staff that's very passionate, had very strong green maintenance skills, and were deployed pretty broadly in the system, but they had not really been trained on the maintenance requirements for a lot of the equipment that was in their purview. There was an overreliance on potable water, and that's directly related to that problem. Most of the raw water systems either only partially worked or didn't work at all. So we were using potable water pretty much everywhere in the park system. And the irrigation system was only partially automated. So it took a lot of manpower to go out and change, you know, watering cycles throughout the season. I did not directly observe it, but I did hear stories that a lot of the temporary staff that were hired were actually used to advance the clocks in a lot of the parks and stay close to them just so they could water when there were problems or when we hit the dry time of the year. Maintenance was pretty reactive in the system and not preventative. So most of the equipment was really by and large allowed to operate until it went to failure. And rather than preventing that, that's not always a bad strategy, actually. For smaller equipment, that can make sense. So you'll see a mix of that in a park system. But some of the equipment was definitely of the size where you really needed to take a more preventative approach. The assets weren't inventoried, so it would have been hard to have launched a preventative system, you know, without having a full knowledge of everything that was out there and what you needed to attend to on a regular basis. The operation had a warehouse, but the discovery was that most of the parts in the warehouse were stored just a couple of blocks away at CPS or a few more blocks at Denver Grass. So it was probably not the most efficient way to stock parks in the system. Also discovered the warehouse was staffed with one full-time person and about nine months had a temporary staff. And then anytime we had alternate duty, we tended to add staffing. So we had as many as three or four people working in there at one time. Did I miss? So the other thing, too, is that the core needs of the system, the core competencies weren't really matched up. They weren't identified very well, and they weren't really matched up. And what I mean by that is that there are certain things that we have to do in the system that you can't really go out into the local market in any way and hire someone to do. So a good example of that would be preventative and routine maintenance. There aren't companies that really come in and fill that gap for you. On the other hand, it is easy to find companies that come in and mow for you. So we put a lot of emphasis on mowing crews and green maintenance and that work, but you know, quite a bit less on some of the other maintenance requirements that we have in the system. Employees were assigned pretty much by park, so they were geographically deployed throughout the city, and they went to that station pretty much every day. I don't know if those assignments changed much. They didn't, hadn't recently changed, so most staff were pretty familiar with the area they had been assigned to for quite a few years. And I kind of characterize that role as a somewhat of a caretaker role, where they did everything in that system and for that park. So they had to be kind of a jack-of-all-trades, which kind of helped me understand what some of the problems were with not having some of the skill sets that we did need. Work direction was provided very frequently by nearby residents. A lot of the work priorities and direction, that was to be expected, particularly when your staff is in that same location for a long time, and they get familiar with the residents. And I think their direction was, you know, to make people as happy as possible and try to manage that as well as the work that they had to achieve every day. Employees in that model competed for equipment because they were dispersed across the parks and all had to do, everyone had to do every type of work that was needed at a park. So supervisors shuttled equipment around, you know, quite a bit. Parks received attention really based primarily on the expertise of the staff person. So we tried to assign by expertise. So you would take your horticulturist and put him out at Roosevelt or Thompson, you know, Collier Park, where you had more of that. And the, you know, the guys that were a little bit better at pump maintenance that had some skills would be assigned at the areas that had a little bit more of that type of equipment. So that model, the model that was out there was really the type of model that you would deploy in a smaller system, where you can deploy it very quickly and for fairly low cost. But the problem with that is that every increase in the size of your system or the complexity of the use of the system required a same-size increase or similar-size increase in the resources to manage that. So over time, everything you add has a pretty substantial cost to it. And that's what the cost curve by and large looked like for the park's operation if you went back, you know, quite a few years. So that model can drive costs. And I'll show you the contrast to that as I go through some of the changes we made. So one of the first things we did is we developed functional teams. And the purpose for that was to train in the skill sets that we also needed to have in the park system. So instead of deploying geographically, you deploy by teams, and you let them build the process and develop the skills. We inventoried all assets in the parks. That was necessary to have not only a work management system that allowed us to do preventative maintenance, but it also allowed us to understand what the capital needs would be in the park system. We built a work management system, and we've now moved to full preventative maintenance. And when I say we, I mean the whole team, not me, not a supervisor, but really everyone was involved in the process. We've developed plans, procedures, and standards. We have numerous procedures that standardize how we work across the system and make us more efficient. How to inspect a system, how to repair a pump, how to set the SCADA system or the controller, the central controller for irrigation. So everyone's working from the same sheet of music, so to speak. We've repaired and automated the irrigation systems. We have gone through virtually every system. There are some that have some substantial capital needs that we haven't been able to fully repair. But we've commissioned virtually everything, so that we're now using raw water at a much higher rate. We did coincidentally see a change in the demand on the water plants with that, and it was a helpful change. It wasn't a direct, a direct or a parameter that we managed. I was careful not to link the two, because I felt that that wasn't the right way to proceed, to put pressure on the park staff to reduce the use of potable water. But because our main facility is right around, produces right around the capacity level that we currently use, it allowed us not to run our second facility, and it did lead to some cost savings there. We leveraged the water utility to provide considerable training on mechanical maintenance and to help repair larger systems. We eliminated the warehouse and partnered with local suppliers. We expanded mowing contracts. That was fairly easy to do, and we felt the quality and the reliability was high. It has taken us some time to learn to manage those contracts. So there was a little startup, you know, learning process to that. We added restroom cleaning contract. We didn't really feel that bathroom cleaning needed to be a core competency of our staff. They still do a fair amount of it, as does the recreation staff, but it's more supplemental. We've reduced labor. In 2010, we were at 41 seasonals, and 26 regular staff. We're at about 11 seasonal right now. We had 12 at the beginning of the year, and we have 20 regular staff. So a fairly substantial change. We eliminated redundant equipment, about $500,000 worth of equipment that was eliminated. Went to functional teams instead of having to spread that across the whole system. Supervisory focus has changed, obviously, from daily and hourly direction and shuttling tools to developing plans, procedures, and standards. And as I mentioned, you know, the skill of contractor management, which is important. We pursued safety certifications and routine inspections for safety. For example, we have a number of staff who are now trained to do playground inspections and then go out and identify the hazards and do the repairs or recommend the replacements that are needed, which was work that really hadn't been done before. Unfortunately, it does highlight a lot of the hazards that are out there and doing that. And that is of concern to us, that we do have a lot of play equipment that is needing to be replaced, because it has, in the case of playgrounds, what they call level-one hazards, which are fairly, fairly, I wouldn't say serious, they're not required to be removed from the system, but you take on more risk by having them out there. This is just a picture of some of the pumping equipment that's out in the parks. You can see this is not small, you know, household equipment. This is fairly substantial. Pipes, pumps, a lot of it had not been maintained, and so it corroded fairly quickly and had to be replaced or rebuilt. And we went, you can see this is a partnership between park staff and our water utility going through all these repairs. So outcomes, we're working on the full range of maintenance responsibilities we have, not just green maintenance. So that is a change. We've reduced the reliance on expensive potable water. It isn't expensive for the park system, but it is for the city overall. We've improved the skills and core competency of the group, and I think we've matched those with our needs a little bit better. We are trending toward lower maintenance costs. Standards and procedures now drive work rather than informal approaches and individual skill sets. We're optimizing service delivery to recreation. And I say optimizing because we're not there yet. We're working on trying to align goals. That's actually a process that our city manager is involved in, trying to unify our goals so that we're synchronized a little bit better than we have been. So more work to do there. We've improved service delivery to LDDA. I think we've achieved our goals there. Kimberly McKee gave us a goal of clean and safe, and she showed us what that meant to her. And we wrote standards and practices that met that. I think we have met that, but I'll let you visit with her to get her impressions of that. We are improving safety. There's a lot more work to do. And we have a better understanding of the capital needs in the park, even though tonight I really focused just on our operating processes. So I think what our cost curve now looks like is more like this. We've had to put an initial investment into building systems and practices, and now we can leverage that to start reducing costs per unit of additional work we take on, which contrasts with that and should allow us to lower costs. So there was the question about the reduction in cost for mowing standards, although that was not related to an efficiency in our processes. That is somewhere in the $200,000 to $300,000 range if fully implemented. It's not fully implemented yet. There still are some areas that are overmowed in the context of the standards, but the reductions are probably in the $150,000 to $200,000 range right now. I show here just what our budget has looked like in the past few years. The blue shows what was budgeted. The red shows what we spent. If you look in 2011, you see that we spent more than what was budgeted, and that was the snowstorm. And so some extra funds were shunted into the, into the parks maintenance to clean streets and parks and remove limbs. But what, where we're at in 2013, this year, is we're showing that we're moving toward the other side of that curve. So our budget is less. Right now, year-to-date, and that's the end of July, we've actually only spent about $1.3 million. We do have some outstanding invoices to pay, but I added, I tried to add the majority of those in there, what I thought covered most of that. So we're actually trending in the right direction. There's a lot of unpredictability to this each year. Not, it doesn't mean that there's a wide span in what we need to spend, but snowstorms, things that require overtime, drought years may require us to mobilize irrigation earlier in the year, mowing contracts can cost a little bit more. But we do show that we're trending in the right direction. I'm going to kind of turn this over to Harold here, but this shows what we're looking at recommending for next year.
So as you can actually look at this, and I think one of the things that we talked about when we discussed the park maintenance fee is, you know, there was a time limit in terms of what we were trying to accomplish. And I think what you can see, if you really look at the graph in 2012, and then you look at 2013, and you look at 2014, based on the projections that we're seeing from the park staff in terms of savings, we were seeing about $240,000. What we were looking at is also how do we plug some of that in to some of the replacement costs that we're having to bear when we look at the state of the system? But what we did, and we'll go into more detail in the budget process, but what we actually did in addressing that $450,000 gap is we took this $240,000 of savings that they had in the budget, and we actually applied it to that operational gap. And then we made some other adjustments in the general fund as a whole to make up that $450,000. So I think what we're seeing is, is that, you know, from a functional standpoint, they're moving in the right direction. One of the things that we're starting to see as you go through this process is you start here, and then as you start adjusting what you're doing to find that optimal point, eventually you hit a point where you start feeling some pain in the process. And I think that's a little bit of what we're seeing now, and that's kind of telling you that, okay, we've probably gone as far as we can really go to achieve that optimal efficiency level. And so, you know, that's embedded in the processes that Bob was talking about. What we're trying to do now is also align goals between, you know, the recreation department and what we're doing in terms of parks operation, because what we're trying to balance in this conversation is that we also have a number of groups that utilize, that have activities in these facilities. And those activities create costs in terms of if you fully program softball fields, then that's actually going to drive up your maintenance costs, because you're having to get in and maintain them at odd times. Your turf is going to get worn down faster. And so what we're trying to do is really align those goals between the two departments, because fundamentally, there's different perspectives, and rightfully so. And so we're trying to bring everyone together to say, what is the optimal condition? So we are going through levels of this process to look at it. But anyway, I just wanted to go over this graph quickly. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
I just had one quick question for you, Bob. Obviously, you know, you started out with this model when we were a smaller city that worked well, where you have, you know, these regional teams working in the parks. And, you know, and for small cities, that probably works pretty well. But now, as we've gotten bigger, as you pointed out, your model of getting more processes and controls and, but eventually, you know, when you get this new model built out, it seems like that should lead with processes and procedures that you need less supervisors. I mean, the ratio of supervisors to actually workers doing the work should change by having the right implementation of the right processes. Is that kind of what you're, you know, tend to see eventually, or is...
Mayor Coombs, that changed. Mayor Combs, that change was made in part a few years ago. So the operation did have three supervisors, and it is down to two supervisors now. So we've, we've kind of made that leap. Whether we can go more than that is yet to be seen, you know, and staff repurposed to other activities, but yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
I, when I was neighborhood group leader, I had a very good working relationship with the person who did call your park. And I found that there was some value, additional value, in a neighborhood knowing who their park manager or park person was that did the maintenance, because they would get reconnaissance on what was happening, maybe overuse of shelters when there were no permits being applied for or paid for, so there would be all this extra trash, or the neighborhood could give them some heads up on things that were happening. So are you finding that under a different system, we might be losing some of that informal communication where people are not going to think about, I see what your point is about some of the, what the staff did was in reaction, people walking up to them, but it was really a two-way communication because people found value in knowing that person and knowing who they could call in the city and developing that relationship. So can you tell me whether or not we still have that kind of communication?
Mayor and council, the answer to your question is yes. We have lost some of that. We, and Harold alluded to this a little bit, we've hit, we've tapped out pretty much what we can do with the model we have now. The model we have now was intended to build functional capacity. We probably need to move a little bit back toward more geographic coverage, and so we're looking at hybrids to do that. So I hope that answers your question. In greater detail, I think that our inspection practices right now still allow us to be familiar with the system enough to keep it safe and clean, but it isn't the same familiarity. And so there is some loss with that, absolutely.
I think if I can jump in too, I think what we're trying, what we're also trying to do is find the sweet spot, because what we also saw in the other scenario, that we may have been too far in one direction, and so what we were seeing is in terms of maintenance of systems and some of the other things, we weren't where we needed to be. And so then now we have this where we had a lot of irrigation, raw water irrigation systems that weren't working. And so what we're trying to do is find that sweet spot in this where you can really get the best of both worlds, because, and right now, we're trying to balance the scales. And so we know what this point is. We now know what this point is, and so we're trying to balance it out so we can really get the best of both worlds, because otherwise, you're always trading one thing off for another.
And I guess that I would still like to advocate that you have a little bit of that personal touch still, because when you contract out for mowing operations, a member of the public or a member of that community right near a park will approach that person, and if they say, they're like, well, it's not my, I'm a contract employee, it's not my job, call somebody else. You know, this city is built so much on, the people that are out there doing the work are the best customer service representatives for the entire city, and across the board, every department gets high marks. And I would hate to have that confidence, the high marks at the parks and forestry department get diminished by a contractor who's trying to make efficient use of their contract time mowing and saying, well, you know, don't talk to me about the park, I'm only here to mow. Not my job, ma'am, you know, and to talk to you about anything else, but I'm mowing here on the grass or I'm cleaning this bathroom. And so one of those, those big issues for neighborhoods are their, the maintenance of their park bathrooms. We hear this all the time. I hear it all the time when I go to neighborhood group leaders, and we're obviously hearing about, you know, how we view the mowing standards too, and to be consistent with the neighbors that we've heard from Macintosh Lake and Rough and Ready and from the Southmore Park neighborhood. I think we also need to do a better job communicating the fact that we've, we've had these lovely pictures of mowing standards, but we're sort of phasing them in, and it all depends on unique circumstances. So I would be your biggest supporter when you come to NGLA to talk about these issues. So anything you want to ask me when I'm there is fine, but I think we need to do that better job of communication, too.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I just, can we go back one slide? Just, yeah, that one right there. So we've spent a lot of time talking about maintenance. We're going to need to find a way to fund the maintenance and upkeep of our parks. Can you explain the 2013 graph? It just looks like all of a sudden, we're not, I mean, why did we go from 2.9, 3.0? I can't see that one. 3.0 down to 2.57? Was it an anomaly? Because that graph would, why, I mean, if we're saving that much money, that just seemed, it just, I mean, we budgeted 2.9, we only spent 2.57. Why are we freaking out about parks' maintenance fee if there's that big of a discrepancy, if we're not spending our budget?
Mayor and council, that relates, once again, back to this, the building of a more systematic approach to maintenance. So we are seeing cost savings. The unit of work, each unit of work out there is producing more value, more work. So we're seeing that with some of the exceptions we've talked about. We are at, I think we're at a good base level of maintenance right now. Within a park system, you can spend endless amounts of money. You can make things look a lot better all the time. You can improve shrub beds, you can improve trimming everywhere. You can spend a lot more than what we have. What we wanted to do is achieve a base level of service and do it without disrupting the community. So this shows the savings that I believe we're able to generate with a base level of service. From here, we can now decide if the savings that we're generating could be used to increase that level of service, repair equipment, replace equipment, or other needs that the park system might have. But you rarely have this opportunity to see what it is, what it costs, to achieve a very base level of service. And that was our goal, was to do that and demonstrate that we could do a good job out in the system.
Okay, so I guess the, my understanding, and I guess my question overall in the back of my mind is, do we need to address this? And that being, do we need to figure out a way to pay for our parks and maintain them? So is this base level of service enough?
So Mayor Combs and Councilmember Bagley, two issues here. So what we're looking at here are the day-to-day operations side. That's, that's the routine work. That's the mowing, the trimming work, as Bob was saying. What you're not seeing there, and what is still looming out there and is still definitely a need, are the capital side of the park system, the renewal, the replacement, and keeping things working. So on the one hand, the good news is, guys, that if we can live with this level of service and this level of base operations, and that's really, you know, the community will weigh on that, and that's what Harold's trying to say as well. You start to reach a pressure point where people push back and say, no, we want you to do more. So the choices we have are to spend more on this day-to-day maintenance side of the equation versus reinvesting some of these dollars that we are saving back into replacing playgrounds or replacing pump systems or replacing lighting systems. That's where the big cost is. And that's what the master plan has showed us when we looked at the inventory of all the equipment and systems out there. And that is also what you have told us very clearly, to come back and report to you on how the heck we're going to pay for that. We're teeing that up for September 3rd. Today is to really to sort of give you this operational side of it where savings can be generated, are being generated, and the work that we're doing is really no different than the work that we did on the utility side and on the street side over the past 15 years. We're now deploying that same kind of approach into the park system. And what I think the community and council ultimately, what we need to weigh in on is, have we gone too far? And do we want to reinvest some of these dollars back into routine maintenance? Or are we at a base level of service that is consistent with those around us and consistent with current practices? And those are choices.
I guess the, I wanted to add that this is truly just a projection, and it's not necessarily sustainable. This is the projection for this year, but I wanted to show you the data and not, just show you the raw data. We rarely do that.
From a budget, if you look at the next slide from a budget perspective, this is what we're really working off of. And what we're saying is, we're actually using those savings to plug into that base level of service that we're providing today. Now, that's for what we have in existence. You start adding to it, then you're adding cost, and then you're taking that base level of funding and you're splitting that out among other properties.
I guess, I guess my thoughts on it are, I think we need to maintain the base level of service, and then when we hear residents complain, we don't need to increase everywhere. Like my recommendation would be from the fine folks in my ward who were saying that they needed that extra line mode, instead of saying, okay, let's go ahead and change the greenway policy, so instead of one strip, we do three. We just say, we keep what we're doing now, which is the base level of service, and then when a need crops up, we just address it. If these folks in their neighborhood want that mode, mow it. We don't need to do it for the entire city. It's just that if somebody requests it, we do it. And I also think that, I guess some of that I've been thinking about is I think, and I don't whether, I don't know whether it's tonight or whenever, but we have to figure out a way to pay for the parks. And so I think we've got five options. One, we have to increase property taxes. Two, we have to increase sales taxes. Three, we have to return to the public utility fee or some fee of some type. Four, we need to start selling parks. Or five, we don't do anything and let the weeds come. But I don't think, I mean, maybe I'm just not seeing another option, but we need to make a decision and just move on with life. And so we have to do something. So I don't know when, at what point you're going to want direction from us, but that's going to be, so that is the September 3rd discussion?
We're actually bringing that on September 3rd. The reason we wanted to bring this today is, again, provide additional information for folks to think about.
So we don't need to do anything with this tonight until September 3rd?
No, we are peeling back the onion, layer by layer.
That's a stinky onion.
Well, it is, and that, and actually, if I can jump in real quick, that's one of the things that I wanted to highlight, because as council, you're probably sitting here going, why are we hearing this now? Well, frankly, we're hearing this now because we've done an inventory. We know what exists in the system. We know what the problems are in the system. And so we're saying, here, here's what we're trying to deal with. And so you're right, it's a stinky onion, but it's, they've gone through years of work doing this inventory so we can understand what we're actually dealing with.
We're also doing more work. So even though we're calling this a base level, we were really focused on the green side. This is everything now. So it's a lot more work and at lower cost. So it's, you know, and I, I'm proud of the group that's done this because it's rare that you, you take this on. It's hard to take this on in an organization like this, but it's good work and you know something a lot of people don't know about their park system. You know really what the base cost is. Very few know that.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. You know, I love what you've done with systems. I like systems. I like systems a lot. I think they create a lot of efficiencies, and that's a good thing, and we've seen it with the numbers. That's awesome. But I do think we need to look at customizing some of those areas. You know, I, when a neighbor calls me and says, we've got weeds that are waist-high, that's a problem, and we need to address it. And I, I'm with Councilmember Bagley, that doesn't mean we have to make a systems change. That means we need to go look at that area and take care of it and have our neighborhoods look well manicured, not, you know, have the natural areas, but not have weeds waist-high. There's a difference. And I don't think natural areas means weeds. As Kim said, you know, we're trying to get rid of those weeds and have natural grasses. That's a whole different deal. But while we're doing that, we need to, we need to take care of the areas that need to be groomed, and I hope that we would do that. I did have a question. If an HOA or a neighborhood group wanted to take care of an area that we deemed we weren't going to mow quite as, as well, would we let them do that?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Finley, we have done that in a number of different areas, and I don't know that we've done it in a real formal way. It's been more of a go out and meet and do that, but probably as we, if we continue to go down that path and continue, no pun intended, if we continue to go down that way, it probably would be a good sort of formalize that in a policy kind of way with the council.
I've got just a quick question on mosquitoes. Does native grass promote the, I guess, the hatching of more mosquitoes than shortly trimmed grasses?
It doesn't increase the hatching. They do reside in the tall grasses, and actually, if you do have buffers with the tall grasses, they'll stay away from the other area. So it is good to have some areas, because they're going to be around the water no matter what, and during the day, they'll go down into that grass.
Thank you.
I'd also like to address the question about the HOA mowing. Are, the standard is not just a mowing standard for cost efficiency. It's a technical standard. It's a science-based standard, and it's based on the theory that urban areas have too little natural habitat, and so they become imbalanced, become imbalanced for different types of mammals and insects, and even the diversity of your plant life as well as your wildlife. So it is a technical, technically-based standard, and if we start removing that, then we do have those consequences. That's, that's your decision, but that's ultimately what we're trying to do is manage for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Writt?
Thank you, Mayor. So do mosquitoes count as wildlife? I'm just wondering. Or does it have to be a mammal in order for it to be a wildlife? First of all, I'll say that this year, I've probably got more complaints about watering and trees dying than I have in the previous years, and I think that you're seeing that as well, and I appreciate that you're responding to the citizens of Longmont. So, but I think where we're at as a, as a community, as a city, we are undergoing some growing pains because, and it's not just with this area, it's across the city. As soon as you get close to that 100,000 mark population, things really dramatically change. And so we see that in a variety of ways, and this is just one of those. And I appreciate the fine tuning that you're doing in order to meet the new demands of our community. I do appreciate your comment about, this is technically based, this is best practices that we're doing. And now, I, I think that I will somewhat disagree with councilmembers. I think if we're going to have a standard, we have a standard. And I do know of one, one group that I met with that were a member, were members of an HOA, and they, as an HOA, decided that they would pay the city X amount of dollars, however much it cost, to mow the section that they were especially concerned about, that was actually their property. So I understand that, but if we're going to do that, we need to have some formal standards that we uphold with that. But I don't like the, okay, well, if you complain, then we'll extra mow over here, and if you complain, we'll extra mow over there. I think we have a standard. We need to keep the standard. Otherwise, we might as well not have a standard. I, if we decide to spend more on mowing, then that means less money that we can spend elsewhere. Maybe that's a swimming pool. Maybe that's a swimming pool. Maybe that... That's what I'm saying, boy.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah. So these are the decisions that we have to make, and they're not easy. But I actually like the mowing standards that we have now. I think that they were carefully thought out, and I think that they... As long as the standard is applied equally, and noxious weeds and problem areas are addressed, then we should keep that standard. One resident mentioned that they believe that their home value has gone down because of the mowing standards. And I will say that my property does not back up to a greenway, and yet, I think everybody's home values have gone down in Longmont, not because of mowing standards, because of the economy. So it would be hard to prove that your housing valuation went down because of mowing standards. Yes, I think I hit everything I wanted to. I took copious notes, but appreciate the work that's done. And I do understand the concerns of residents who had a certain expectation of, "This is what it looks like." And then when that gets changed over the years, I can understand the disappointment. But this is a reality of the size of the community we are, and what we need to do in order to make ends meet. And because it is science-based. So thanks for the work that you've done.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. But before I speak, I'd like to give Councilmember Sonori and Councilmember Santos a moment if... Okay, thank you. So...
I'm not going to do that, James.
Okay. Well, I try to be polite. I just also want to reiterate that we do have standards for a reason, and because they're best practice-based. I agree with Councilmember Witt that just because we have... There are certain neighborhoods that may not be as organized, and if we're going to respond to every need for or request for additional mowing, and we don't talk about the standards, and actually maybe go out and put feet on the ground of staff. I know in particular, staff, over time, has, going back to, you know, your predecessor, Kim, Mr. Bessler, had gone out and tried very hard to explain what's going on around the rough-and-ready area. And I am absolutely sympathetic to the neighborhoods when there's some policy change and there's no communication between the city and residents. And I think it's terribly unfair that we ask residents to just adapt when we may not have done our best job at communicating when these changes are occurring. And I know sometimes it's very difficult. And so, I would encourage, not just through NGLA, but I would also speak to the HOAs out there to invite staff to one of your board meetings when you might have this on the agenda, or have your representative sit down with staff. And maybe part of it is that we don't know where the lines are truly drawn, to go out there and put feet on the ground to say, "Okay, reassess. Maybe when we're looking at our standard, take a measuring tape. Are we really doing what is the standard?" And then communicate that to people. And also, if there are problems with noxious weeds... I know there's been a big effort to organize people to pull weeds. We all got invitations to come and pull weeds in open space as community service projects for people that are in restorative justice, or when the people in the community that need to do community service hours, or even in general, how we organize volunteers. If there are spot areas, let's invite the community to help in the work that we do to get those weeds pulled. And again, let the neighborhood know, because, you know, the neighbors may not want to be able to work in 95-degree weather, but they might have grandchildren who they want to give $5 to, come visit Grandpa for the afternoon, "I'll give you $5, you can pull weeds." But I think that there are many different ways to address this issue. And I guess that my emphasis is, we need to communicate better with the neighborhoods and be fair, and go out and address concerns.
Councilmember David?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Do you want to go? I guess I'm not... I'm a big believer in standards, but I don't think we need to say, "We've upped our standards, so up yours." I just wanted to say that, because it sounded punny. But the... I'm sitting here looking at the picture. And so, I have no problem having mowing standards, but we also need planting grass standards, because what I'm seeing from the picture that they provided is that we're mowing some grass we've planted, and then not mowing others. Meaning that when I don't cut my grass, I'm seeing, you know, when they start sprouting the heads and they get the seeds. So I guess, I'm just saying that, I mean, that just looks sloppy. So it doesn't look like we're following a standard. This particular picture shows, at least what I'm seeing... I don't know what the scientific background is, or the basis, but I'm seeing mowed grass, uncut grass, and then riparian section of vegetation. And so, all I'm saying is, we keep our standards, and then when there's a problem, people in staff who are competent go out there and address the problem, rather than having to spend an hour, two hours at council discussing what we do to mow our grass. So, I mean, to me, it's pretty simple. You know, keep the standard, and when there's a problem, we address it, and then go on with life. Because I think it's kind of... I mean, I don't think it's how we mow should be a policy decision. Meaning, mow the grass, make people happy. I don't think it's rocket science. And so, I guess for me, I don't know if I need to make a motion, but, I mean, why don't we cut there? I mean, are we familiar with this area? That's the standard? Because if we go back to the earlier presentation, I didn't see any regular grass, uncut grass. And then, why does it look this way?
Mayor, council, part of that is because there's a transition going on right now, trying to get the natural grass to grow back up, because there are some areas that were over-mowed, and in some cases, residents have just gone out and mowed, so we're not keeping that back up. The only thing that's supposed to mow in that area is the one swath along the pathway. All the rest is supposed to be going to natural-length grass. So it's transitional.
Okay. So the idea is that we mow by the sidewalk, and then let it grow from there?
Correct.
Are there other areas in the city where it's worked?
Yes.
Meaning transitional?
Yes, if you let it grow, yes.
It will transition. We stay the course. Keep going.
We'll come down and look like that.
Right. No, I see it. I'm waiting. I assume you're heading towards that direction.
Yes, sorry.
All right.
Oh, not that one.
That was the actual picture.
It's this one?
Okay, go back. Yeah, that's the actual picture that I'm looking at, but it looks different, because...
No, I think that's a different one.
Is that a different picture?
Yeah, it's a different picture.
All right.
I don't believe I have that picture.
All right. All right, see, okay, but that's what I'm saying. That goes right up to the sidewalk.
Right. The difference here is, we mow from the sidewalk to the back of homes. Where we're not mowing is that actually goes to the rough-and-ready ditch. So we're mowing only one swath along the path, and then we're letting it grow natural-length along the actual creek.
All right. I guess my next question is, if they all live there in want-it mode, why not?
Does it cost too much? That's not the standard. We're going to not have it.
So any changes we make to the standard increase its cost, and it's not just doing one, you know, taking the lawnmower one more time. It then is additional fertilizer, it's additional herbicide, because there's more... So, and that's why we're having this conversation, you know, is everybody okay with the standard, or do we need to look at other ways of managing?
And what's the standard? What is the standard?
For that example you have right there, it is one mow swath along the path.
So like, three feet? 10 feet? Six feet?
Yeah, six.
Six feet?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, all right, I'll digest that.
Yes, go ahead. I think one of the things that we have to be careful of, and this is not a case that happened in Longmont, these are issues that I've dealt with in the past, is that if we say the standard is one swath or six feet from the sidewalk, and then for a certain area, they say, "Well, we want another one," what ends up happening is you deal with a snowball effect. And so then, it actually becomes a broader issue, and it creates other conversations that come into play. Why are you doing this here? Why are you not doing this here? And it becomes a fairly significant issue. So I think that's part of why we're saying this, is we're saying, "Here's the standard. Here's what we're hearing about the standard." And as we talk to you more about this issue, we will be delving into those in deeper discussion.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I think what may have been useful is to see... I'm looking back through my council packets and trying to remember when we, you know... Councilmember Levinson and I have seen, and potentially some other councilmembers have seen this before, a lot, like, at least once a year. It may have been helpful to have, and I remember seeing it, what staff goes by, the standard. So, and I remember going on the Parks and Rec tour, and we went down Airport Road back in there, and we were shown, "Okay, this is where we cut, this is the swath we take, and this is how we mow," and blah, 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 blah. It was Mayor Baum and other new councilmembers at that time. Sorry. So, I mean, that may have been helpful for this conversation. So if you could find that and send it to us, that might be helpful. When is this flyer going to be ready?
Probably within a week or two.
That would also be definitely helpful. If there are weeds, we need to take care of them. If we have a, you know, if there is a standard, as much as people don't like it, we have The problem is, is that, you know, there are people that have an expectation of, "Well, it was mowed." You know, I remember a conversation, I want to say a year or two ago, "We mowed something that we shouldn't have mowed. People got used to it, and then we said, 'It was a mistake. We pulled back,' and then we had upset residents. They expected it, and we did it. And, you know, it was our mistake." So, you know, again, if somebody complains... Yeah, I understand the adage, "If somebody complains, we'll get it done." But then, if someone else complains, somebody else complains on this side of town, somebody complains on this side of town, "I don't like it, I don't like it," then the costs tend to go up, and we're... But we're having difficulty already maintaining what we have. And I'm not saying, I'm not of the adage, "We need to sell parks, we need to raise this, we need to raise that." I think the discussion we're going to have with the budget, you know, we will eventually find ways, whether we have to institute the parks maintenance fee again, or look at other ways of cost efficiency, other cost efficiencies. And I'm not of advocating the institution of, reinstitution of the parks maintenance fee. I believe there's other efficiencies that need to be addressed, especially with the... Bob, your presentation, I'm still kind of in awe of how some of the things that could have been done in the past. But, you know, getting the information out to residents, as Councilmember Levinson said, is crucial, whether it's, "This is how we mow," whether it's mosquitoes, whether it's you name it. We need to get a heck of a lot better educating, and it needs to start immediately.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And you guys did a tremendous job on the presentation. As Councilmember Santos suggested, if you have the standards, when we have the general conversation on the parks and how we're going to maintain them long-term, it would be great to bring that. And I think, can you mention that the brochure was only going to go to the people that live Yes. So I think what would be helpful, since a lot of people use the pathways, and I've heard them ask why, you know, if we have to maintain our weeds, why isn't the city maintaining their weeds? I think it'd be helpful to send that brochure to everybody in the community, okay, and utility bill, et cetera. And this way, everybody at least has gotten it, and if they're interested, they can be on the same page. And I'll reserve other comments till we have the general discussion on how we're going to manage the parks in general.
Councilmember Robinson?
I think the other aspect that Bob's part of the presentation brought up is that if we're going to do a mowing contract, we don't have enough flexibility unless you're going to build an additional cost basis into the mowing contract to anticipate extra mowing added on here and there. And so, you know, you can buffer that in to say, "Oh, another, you know, we could do another 10%." You know, my opinion also is that when you do the mowing contract, sometimes the grass doesn't grow as fast, and so to let grass grow a little bit longer is not too bad in parks in the summertime. And so, I don't know whether or not, when you're looking at the contracting aspects of things, whether or not there's a way to, you know, jiggle the mowing schedule by contract or the cleaning schedule, because certainly, again, residents that will call in and tell you the bathrooms don't look clean, it might be an influence. For example, when I was out at Sandstone Ranch for the Peruvian Festival, you know, we needed to do more out there when we had that big festival. And so, we have to have a little bit of flexibility when we have the contracts. And then, the other thing I think for communication is, even if we had, like, a little sign to put up in these areas where we get a lot of phone calls that say, "Curious about the way this looks?" You know, put a little... You could do just, you know, little signs, and then people have a way to call somebody or to look at the city's website to talk, to see what the mowing standards are for that area. And you could just have, you know, by geographic location, "This is the kind of mowing standard we use here." And at least people have, if they have a question, they can get some information before they talk to staff. Again, the communication piece is so critical, and to work better with the neighbors, because we burned up, as Councilmember Santos pointed out, you know, we burned up council time and also staff time in late '07, '08, '09, '10 on this issue around rough-and-ready. And it gets people a little tired, and we see many new faces than we saw in those past years. So it's not going away, this issue of rough-and-ready. I just think we need to do a better job communicating.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. To those folks who were addressing 4B in the public comments, the... I was just trying to voice your concerns, and you've heard what people have to say, you've heard what I've had to say. So, solutions, I'm here in my ward, so if you want to, just shoot me an email, and then tell me what your thoughts and solutions are, and I'll kind of listen to you offline, and we'll bring it back if we have to. Fair enough?
Okay.
Okay, well...
Can I add one thing? So on the 3rd, we're bringing back a number of different options to deal with this. We just didn't want to take time up on the 3rd going through the details, so we're trying to set that conversation up.
Right. Thank you, Kim and Bob. Great presentation. I love it when it's stuff that's science-based. I love it when it starts with science-based. All right, it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I wanted to thank the neighborhood group at West Point for inviting me to their barbecue this weekend. Sorry I couldn't stay for the whole thing, I had my 40th high school reunion, but I enjoyed meeting, uh, the neighbors, um, and look forward to it next year when I can hopefully stay. Uh, my business of the week this week is Red Frog Coffee. They're located at 15 Ken Pratt Boulevard, Suite 200. Uh, perhaps I'm thinking of this because I'm a little tired this evening, but they have organic coffee and award-winning conscious coffees, uh, fruit smoothies, gluten-free foods, and music you'll love, it says here. Sounds like a great place, uh, if you need coffee in the morning, go to Red Frog Coffee.
Councilwoman Wright?
I make it a point never to drink something that's conscious. That's awful.
That was.
I will be insured.
Immediately. Yes, immediately. That still wiggles her mitts.
All right, uh, City Mayor, any comments?
No comments, Mayor, Council.
City Attorney, any comments?
Mayor, Council, I did want to remind you, do have a performance evaluation executive session next week. Uh, I've just resented the link for the Survey Monkey. Uh, if you could do that at your earliest convenience, I think that would be helpful for everyone. And that's it.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.